Mr. King could probably provide you with the wording with regard to a conditional approval, based on Mr. Chang keeping his end of the bargain by starting the repairs. We have a contractor here today that Mr. Chang's already starting to discuss repairs with. This is a no-nonsense guy who wants to invest in the city, who has invested in the city, and wants to straighten this property out once and for all.[855.37-860.34][S05] Let me add to reading between the lines here.[860.37-866.72][S05] It looks like there was a condemnation originally in 2012, went back and forth, condemned,[866.75-869.41][S05] uncondemned, condemned, uncondemned.[869.44-875.34][S05] Eventually, it went before the city Housing Appeals Review Board.[875.37-882.34][S05] So that took up a number of, I don't want to say months, but maybe years, to argue
that case. And then this appeal is from the decision of the Housing Appeals Review Board. Now, that was taken and before the court in 2018. So it's been a continuing litigation between Mr. Chang and the city that has now gotten before Judge Monley, as to whether the property should have been condemned in the first place.
And Mr. Mulligan, in your opinion, do you think that this litigation occurred because of the mismanagement that I spoke of earlier with the LIPS department?
No, I don't really know that I could, that I could point at one thing. I think it was just maybe miscommunication, perhaps some of the issues with record-keeping. I think that's what Judge Monley cites, record-keeping with the city. And I think that's why the judge afforded my client the opportunity to have the 90 days. And I also believe that's why Attorney O'Brien, who was representing the city last week, also agreed that Mr. Chang should be afforded the opportunity to bring this property up to code.
And he can't comply with this court order until he gets our approval.
Right.
Just a little bit on the parking. Is the lot, according to this, is it 55 feet wide, is that correct?
Correct, it's 50 feet, 55 feet wide by 133 deep.
So I see you have six spots here, but you don't have anything in for setbacks or anything like that?
No, I kind of did that on the fly myself, I just looked at, you need, what, 1.5?
So it looks like you'll be short a spot.
Excuse me?
You'll be short a spot with setbacks. And I mean, when I was there, it's pretty steep, so he's going to have a lot of work to make that into a parking lot back there.
Well, I actually walked the property myself today, and there was a garage there off Reagan Place. And when you walk, it's, there's like a plateau. It's the 55 feet, I believe it's level, so those six cars or five cars can park direct, yes, will he have to take some shrubbery down? Of course. But I think it's pretty flat. And then it descends, you're right, Mr. Walsh, you're right, it descends down into the back of the property.
So how will, how will you make it easier for the tenants to get to the parking lot? If it's undeveloped, right? The property is totally undeveloped right now, in the backyard? It's just grass and trees.
Yeah, it has to be, I think it has to be manicured, and I think, as you, if you were out at the property, you know that you could see steps that ascended up to the, where there must, there must have been a garage, and that plateau that I spoke of.
One of the things I seen there when I was there this afternoon, and going back to what Mr. Walsh just said, I did measure from the alleyway where, you know, you assume his property touches that alleyway, and there's spots that it's only 14 feet deep before it nose dives down. And it does nose dive, probably the majority of it. So he is going to have to try to get 18 feet of flat land. And I think that's what Mr. Walsh was talking about, he's probably going to have to put a retaining wall up and fill that in. Because my guess is that one time, they probably parked just parallel there, you know, with the, maybe one or two cars, but there's no way that five cars could safely park on that berm there right now.
And I think he's required to have, is it under the statute six?
Under the statute six, and they have to be eight, I'm sorry, nine feet by 18 feet.
So if that's a condition that you would impose on my client, he would have to submit to that some?
I don't think the board's so concerned about that one spot. I think, I speak for myself, I'm sure Mr. Walsh is that, is the safety of the cars pulling in there. So I think we're going to have to look at a retaining wall build up to acquire that, probably 20 feet, because they can't stick out in that alleyway, and some kind of rail in front of it to stop them from going forward down to the backyard, I'm sure he won't want that to his property.
And I think that's a reasonable request, Mr. Gattens.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to give testimony on this case?
Mr., sorry, Attorney Mulligan, if when you sit there, you want to object or anything, you're just going to have to turn the microphone back on. He turned it off before.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Joe Ohora, 916 West Elm Street.
Your last name, sir?
Ohora, O-H-O-R-A. Can I approach with the fire department report?
Are the other two gentlemen wanting to testify?
Do you want to?
The house has been condemned since 2012. And six years ago today...
Thank you.
The fire department responded to the property and found that there was an oil spill. They called DEP and Eric Shuppi. And Eric Shuppi stated that the property owners had to get a hazmat team in and clean it up, and they had to be notified when they were doing it. The fire department found two families with four children living in there, and they were jumping the meters for their electricity. Judge Monley gave them 90 days last year, they didn't even cut the grass, never mind doing any work on the house. The, John and I used to cut the grass, but since last year, when they gave the 90-day to them to get it up to code, we stopped cutting the grass. And if they were coming back into court today, you'd think that they would have, you know, at least go and cut the grass, nothing has been done.
If I may just ask Mr. Ohora a question. Mr. Ohora, isn't it true that there are at least two lots, so that I guess if you're looking at, facing the property, to the right-hand side, that are empty?
It's Ohora, and yes.
Excuse me?
It's Ohora, and yes.
Ohora, Mr. Ohora, and isn't it true that those lots are overgrown, and they don't belong to my client, isn't that true?
True.
Okay. And isn't it true that the front grass is cut?
False.
Okay. Now, were you there today?
I drove by this morning, yeah.
I have nothing further.
You want to raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
Yes.
Please give your name and addresses, please.
Patrick Lee, L-E-E, 912, 914, and 916 Einan Street. I live directly across from the property. I own an empty lot next to my house, which is well-maintained. I bought my house in '08, and for the four years before that house was condemned, the police were there daily, gang members, unbelievable. This guy never took care of anything, not from day one. Not from day one. I don't know what else to say. We've called the city numerous times.
Hold on one second.
Excuse me, Mr. Lee.
Unless and until we have documents reflecting that the police have been called on numerous occasions, I understand Mr. Lee's concerns, but I can't cross-examine speculation. I need to have evidence.
Get the reports, it's easy to get, there's 100 times the police were there. And your family's not sitting across the street while gang members are running through your yard because the FBI surrounded the house.
I can interject.
That fire department has the car 18 called car six, so the cops were involved, and it's in that report.
And I think if you guys check, you'll see the police were there hundreds of times.
I know, but we can't check tonight, so I mean, and I have to agree with that objection. I have a question, just stop your testimony for one second. How long has Mr. Lee owned this property?
Since 2008.
Okay, thank you.
2006.
Or excuse me, yes, 2006. I stand corrected, the deed speaks for itself.
So as far as testimony, let's keep it to Mr. Lee, 2006 forward to today, okay? Thank you.
I'm John Runcavage, I live at 911 Einan Street. Mr. Chang, have you ever met me before?
Can you just speak into the microphone?
You got to turn around.
Have you ever met me before, Mr. Chang? I've never seen you before in my life. This house has been raided, no one takes care of it, it's just falling in the ground. If you guys drove by, I have pictures of the foundation of this house that's sinking. Sean would have to be a magician to make this house up to standards. There's a hole in the roof that raccoons come in, in and out every night. Possums, woodchucks come out of the foundation, it's, the house is shot. It'd be easier to tear it down than it would be to fix this house.
So with that said, what you just said right there, like, what would the neighbors want for that house? And we ask that quite often up here.
Nothing, up until, we had the news on our street a few months ago, along with the city council members.
Just go over to the microphone and talk into the microphone.
You need to speak in the mic, we can't hear you.
We had city council members and the news on our street, because we have five houses that are deplorable on our street.
But let's talk about, I'm talking about this one, what would you want with this house?
We would like it gone.
Like, torn down?
Torn down.
Do you know what the chance of that in this city right now? I'm not being facetious with you. You could wait 10, 15 years for a house to come down.
I understand, I understand, but it's, it can't be fixed, it can't be fixed. And Mr. Chang does not care about the property. If he did, he'd be taking care of it over the last few years. Only because the news contacted him a few months ago, that's when he got the ball rolling on all this stuff here. He should have got it done a year ago when the judge gave him 90 days, he did nothing, nothing, not even cut the grass. Mr. Chang doesn't care.
Is that your opinion, Ms. Ohora, I'm your attorney.
It's my opinion, yes, it's my opinion.
That's something that you should ask, is this your opinion or fact?
I would just ask if, you know, isn't it true that Mr. Chang, let me preface it by saying this, if Mr. Chang truly wasn't concerned about the property and wanted to restore it up to code, why, why has he been involved in litigation for over five years, expending money on lawyers and other professionals? Why would he do that?
We can't figure that out either.
Not Mr. Chang.
Can I approach the bench and just show you a picture of the back of this house?
I mean, we've all been there, we've all been there, and we've seen the house.
We all have pictures on our phones.
Now, Mr. Walsh, can I approach and show you all these?
I mean, Mr. Mulligan, why is he not maintaining the house now, even though?
The LIPS contacted the city, they're faxing it to us. Quite honestly, he's been even afraid to go on the property, and I've had cases where they wouldn't allow the property owner to do anything in connection with the property while it was condemned.
I mean, just looking at this inspection report, this is 2013, it said the building was occupied in spite of a condemnation issued on the structure, it says the electrical was tampered with, and it was, the power was being illegally restored to one unit. I mean, if, that's more than five years ago.
And that may be very well true, but I'm not sure that Mr. Chang was responsible for those people being in that.
Yeah, but if it's his building, he should be.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, Mr. Walsh, I agree.
These are all my correspondence with the LIPS department over the years since 2012, this whole thing.
Twice, twice his neighbors, we witnessed his little property manager take the condemned signs off, and a week later, people were living in there, until the city came back and tossed them out again, twice. And, not him, but his little, got a property manager comes around, used to come around, hasn't come around, but he did take the condemned signs down, move people in, I mean, how long was it, not even a month? The city threw them back out again. And the house was condemned.
I don't want to belabor the point, but there has been confusion as to, and I think the legal documents speak for themselves, about whether it was condemned, uncondemned, condemned again. So maybe, maybe his property manager did take down the condemned sign, but maybe it was based on the fact that the property had then been uncondemned. There's been a, this, this is only a quarter of Mr. Chang's file. I only brought the relevant documents tonight. I mean, this has been ongoing, and here we have a gentleman from outside of our area wanting to invest money to bring that up to speed. And these guys are right, there, it is a nice neighborhood, I was up there today. And it could be nicer, and, and well-kept. Mr. Chang now knows, he's under the gun, he's got 90 days, am I correct, by pursuant to that order?
90 days to start?
Second time.
No, 90 days, yeah, well, as long as he starts.
So as to take significant steps.
Yes, significant steps. The city would then entertain letting him, extend him some time to finish the job if he's not completed.
So Dan, since this house is condemned, it looked like it was a four-unit, is this going back to one, or is this going to go back to a two-family?
Well, he's asking for...
Four units.
Four units.
What would it legally be if we turned it down?
Two.
Two.
Is there a way not to get the city engineer out at the house, to let him inspect it first?
If he was to get this, it's currently condemned, is that right, Mr. King?
It's, it's more than condemned, it's, it's under a demolition order. That's, that's what was appealed, it was condemned and then ordered to be demolished.
So if he was to ever get this uncondemned, he would go through a vigorous inspection process to get that house back up to, I mean, it would cost a fortune, pretty much.
For a year, Mr. Olewski's been telling me that he has a bond on this house. Over a year, he's been lying to me. Eric Shuppi from DEP has all the reports, and DEP, I thought I didn't need the reports I thought I didn't need the reports because I thought it was going to be torn down because they're supposed to go in front of Judge Monley to uphold his order, and a backroom deal was made.
I mean, Mr. Mulligan, it's under my, I mean, it seems like the place is definitely not taken care of. I mean, looks like he's already approved for two units, and I think the neighbors would feel a lot more comfortable, and we would too, if he would start the project, get the two units up and running, and prove to us that he's going to fix this house, and then come back to us for the other two units, and I think he would walk through with a breeze.
We, we would welcome that opportunity, Mr. Walsh. Perfect. If, if the board is inclined to do that, we would accept that. We would take one unit, add two units.
They don't need nothing from us, am I right? The two units, he's okay to?
Yeah, he wouldn't even be here tonight.
He wouldn't, he wouldn't need to be here for two units.
I think if he got started on the two units that he's legally allowed to do, show the neighbors and us that he's going to, he's going to make it right.
Would the city expect you still have to come out?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's condemned. It has to come off that condemned list.
Yeah, before he can get a certificate of occupancy, it has to be fully inspected by, by the city.
I'd just personally be shocked if they said it's okay. I would, I would be shocked.
So how, how, will he have to go in front of DEP?
Not of our hands there.
Yeah, I mean, we're just zoning. We're not, nothing to do with, I mean, that has to do with. The city inspectors will deal with all of that.
Yeah. So I asked the neighbors, I mean, he can just start two houses tomorrow morning, two units tomorrow morning.
Without, without anyone's approval.
I mean, if he was to prove to you guys.
For ten years, though, we've been looking at the same deplorable home. Nothing has been done.
I mean, I'm disappointed, I, I'll speak freely. I'm disappointed with the landscaping that isn't done in the back of that property, and I could tell it's probably freshly cut, and I'll say probably because of this order here. So going forward, I hope, as a property owner in the city of Scranton, even though you're from outside the area, they take some responsibility for the condition of that property. We have enough out-of-town owners that come in here, and I hate saying this, but they run our city into the ground, and I hope you're not one of them.
I believe if he was to get those two units up and running the right way, get the property looking really nice, and came back for the other two units, I don't see, personally, I don't see any problems. I think the neighbors would be very happy to see it up and running the right way.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's possible.
Mr. Chang, you'd be okay with that?
That's on him, that's on his finances to do that. I mean, so.
Yeah, but he's legally allowed to do two units. He doesn't need our approval for that.
If he wants to waste his money and think that he's going to get that house?
That's up to him, you know?
That's up to him.
Yes, right, that's up to him.
He has the 90 days to get started on this and show improvement. And, and Dan, if I'm not mistaken, with that judge's order, if in 90 days he doesn't show significant steps, it goes back before the Housing Appeals Board?
No.
No, back to the judge?
What the order says, if the respondent fails to take significant steps to remediate the property within 90 days, the city is authorized to demolish the property.
And who determines the steps that, I mean, it's a judgment call, I take it at that point there?
The judge would.
Judge Monley.
Okay. Well, there you go, judgment, so.
They would file a petition for contempt and find him in contempt and, and order that the property be demolished.
Yeah.
So.
I would expect significant progress to mean significant progress, like almost done.
Yes. So we're going to, at this point here, leave it up to the applicant to decide what he wants to do, if he wants to withdraw his application?
Because he doesn't need our approval to do the two units, unless he wants us to vote on the four units.
Is it my understanding that if, in fact, Mr. Chang takes significant steps to start to bring the property up to code in connection with two units, that we have an understanding that he can come back here if, in fact, they're up to standard and up to code, that he could come back and then request an additional two units?
He can always request it. We, there's certainly no guarantees that he's going to get it.
No, no, I understand that, but that he has the, the right to come back.
He has the, he certainly has the right to come back, because if you withdraw this application, then there's no time period for him to be able to come back, you know? If he was denied, if he was denied, then he'd have to wait a year.
But I...
Jim, if he was denied tonight, he would have to wait a year.
No, I understand that.
If you withdraw tonight, then there's no time period.
But on behalf of the city, let me clarify, two units. When I, when we talk about a two-unit building, I'm talking about the whole building is used for two units. Not that he, not that he fixes up two of the apartments and leaves two of them unfinished, and then come back and say, well, I fixed two, now I want to fix the other two. A two-unit house is a two-unit house, not half, not half-empty.
That makes sense.
I just, so everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, because we weren't.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
What's considered significant steps?
Not, not our, that's up to Judge Monley.
At this point, with the, with the board's permission, my client would withdraw the application with the understanding that he would not be precluded from at least applying for the additional two units if, in fact, he brings the current property up to standard. Thank you.
Doesn't need your approval to withdraw. He's withdrawing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please call the next case.
Case number three, Martin J. Walsh seeks variance to convert two-unit home into three-unit home at 934 Woodlawn Street, R1A Zone.
You please raise your right hand. Do you sell me swear to testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you, God?
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Martin Walsh, 401 Houston Street, Clark Summa, PA.
Thank you. You may proceed.
I'm looking to reestablish the third unit at my property at 934 Woodlawn Street. It was a three-unit. Got rezoned to two units. I'm looking to apply for the third unit to be reapplied, reestablished.
So just refresh my memory, was it condemned originally?
Yes, sir.
When you came back, so we, you were back here a while back, right?
It was uncondemned. It was all approved for three units, all inspected, everything was approved, but at this hearing, I was only allowed for two units. I accepted it with this stipulation that I could come back and apply for the third unit at a later date. That was two years ago. Now I'm reapplying.
He was here on June of 2017. We gave him permission for two units because of the lack of parking at the time. So you're here, the variance you're looking for is as well as parking for that third unit.
I have five spots.
What I'm saying is, we approved it, we only gave you the two because you only had the required parking for two at that time. That's the only reason we cut you down to two.
So I think we're going to have the same issue that Mrs. Newcomb talked about earlier. We got an application here. I did walk in your backyard today, but it's hard to visualize your parking without actually having a parking plan for us to look at of where the parking's going to be. I saw a garage back there. We really have nothing to go on as far as your parking besides what you're telling us.
Well, you were there, you saw it. There's five.
I saw a garage and some rocks and stuff. I didn't see no designated parking, besides the garage.
You need a parking plan. I mean, we stated that right in the beginning of this. Again, I was over there today. I took pictures. I understand you could get two cars in front of that garage, but beyond that, I see pavement on different, like, on the right-hand side, but clearly not marked out that, like, I want to see your parking plan. I want to see a piece of paper drawn out with a parking plan on it, like we require almost everyone else that should come here with them.
That's all you need?
Well, it's a big part of it, yeah. That's the main part. If you're, you're looking for additional parking spots, you got to show us where you're putting them.
Yes.
Well, I have five spots.
I, I, I'm not going to keep repeating myself. I'm speaking for myself.
Do you have a parking plan here? Is that what you have?
Do you have a parking plan, or?
Yeah.
Well, why don't you turn it in when you turn this application in?
I...
And that's where I didn't understand, the spaces to the right there, do you have measurements on those spaces or anything, like?
They were exactly up to code two, two years ago. They were approved.
These parking spots?
Yes.
Do you know what size they are?
Nine by 18, as you stated. Technically, they only need four and a half, so...
Well, technically, they need five.
Well, why, why do you say four and a half?
It's one and a half per unit, so it bumps up. You don't have a half a car. You have a full car, so it goes up to the higher.
And I have five spots.
Well, I mean, I just want to clear up that technically statement.
I don't, I don't know about anyone else, but I don't feel...
Do you have a question, Ms. Newcomb?
No, I'm speaking with my partner.
So when the house was condemned, it was, all three units were condemned originally? Is that what it was?
Correct.
And all three are now uncondemned?
Correct.
All three units are uncondemned?
Correct.
Dan, is that correct?
The building is, was uncondemned, and a certificate of occupancy was issued for two units.
For two units, so that...
Yeah. That kind of gets back to what I brought up in the last case. I don't know if an apartment was left vacant, but he was granted permission by this board to have a two-unit house. He was given a certificate of occupancy for a two-unit house. So as far as the city's concerned, it's a two-unit house.
So would that third unit have to be inspected again?
Uh, yes. There would have to be a new certificate of occupancy for, to make it a three-family versus a two-family.
Does that have to happen before us, like, before this gets voted on?
Well, I, I wouldn't...
No, they, because he would have to expend money.
Yes.
He wouldn't expend money till we approve it.
I'm looking at the pictures I took of your property today. The gravel spaces, are you counting that as a space?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And if there's a car parked in number two space, isn't that blocking?
No, no, I have two spaces in the garage. Two spaces are in the garage. They're not out in front of the garage.
Okay.
So there's no problem with turning around or backing.
You know where I was getting at there.
Yeah, exactly.
The parking spot that I have little concerns about is one right at the base of the steps of that exit for that one apartment they have there. If there's a car parked there, it's actually going to be blocking them steps, or pretty darn close to blocking them steps.
Well, I think, I believe it's enough egress. I don't know the exact... It's not on the sidewalk. It's away from the sidewalk.
It's away from the sidewalk. I'm just saying, I'm not trying to argue, I'm not trying to argue with them, just looking at and giving you my opinion.
I understand.
I mean, if they park head-on into that, the rear of the car is probably only about a foot and a half. Well, I'm looking at your blocks, they're probably 18-inch blocks that are laying there, so it's roughly 18, 20 inches away from the bottom of the steps.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to give testimony on this case? Raise your right hand, please. Do you sell me swear to testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you, God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Mark Seitzinger, 1112 Columbia Street, president of the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association, former building code official for the city of Scranton.
Thank you.
I have a couple of things. And maybe, Don, maybe you can clarify this. Did it revert back to two units because of the condemnation?
I believe so, yes.
So it went back to its original status at that point?
Correct.
It is an R went, R1A Zone, correct?
Correct.
Which, we all know what that means. I have a couple of things that you might not find relevant, but even permitting and whatnot, I don't know how permits were granted when there is roughly $7,000 in fees still owed to the city of Scranton at this point on this property. One for taxes and one for refuse. On June 20th of 2017, Mr. Pennatar issued a, a ruling, basically, of two residential units in an R1A Zone. As a result of complaints that we received at the neighborhood association, the city of Scranton back in 2016, I believe it was, I do have paperwork here, July 12th of 2016, we filed complaints regarding this property and the condition of the property, and...
That was prior to the board approval in 2017.
I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is complaints had, did come to us, so I'm stating my relevance of being here. The city of Scranton did act upon that and give notice of violation. Couple of quality of life, a couple of quality of life citations on that. Was the property removed from the demolition list? Has that ever been appealed? Because they did receive a demolition letter back on September 2nd of 2016.
I, I would have to assume it was because a certificate of occupancy after an inspection was granted.
Okay.
And if I remember correctly, Mr. Seitzinger, there was a lot of neighbors here the last time against this project, and I think that's why we, we held back on the three units, and that was the reason why we didn't approve that third. He was going to prove to us that he was going to, he was going to do it right, and...
Correct. And I'll be 100% honest, if he's got the two units, that's fine. We are 100% opposed to a third unit in that neighborhood. If you go through that neighborhood, there's no more than, you know, two-unit structures in that, in that area. I believe once this all went down, the next-door neighbor put their house up for sale. I mean, I've driven by it recently. I mean, I've driven by it for my whole entire life. I live out that way. I've had complaints on it when I worked for the city of Scranton. You know, my thing is, is it's an R1A Zone. Two units are allowed. Three units, you have to come through this, but I know based on our meeting last night, and I can only speak for myself, I can only speak for what was told to me, they are adamantly opposed as a neighborhood to three units in their, in the neighborhood. You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that wants to give testimony on this?
Oh, here we are again.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you sell me swear to testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you, God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Albert Young, 1713 Wyoming Avenue in Scranton. I was born and raised in Scranton 78 years ago. I have lived in that neighborhood.
Dan, before he goes any further, is he, Wyoming Avenue, I mean, are we even relatively close to this property?
Very close.
It's down, down two blocks.
It's, it's three blocks away.
Dan, are we going to get allowed to give testimony?
He's not within the 200 feet.[1627.52] You always have the discretion to grant standing.
He's also the vice president of the neighborhood association, so he's in that ballpark.
Should've said that first. Now we could, now we could speak.
I'll start over and say I'm the vice president of the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association.
I am vice president of the neighborhood association.
Proceed.
And I have lived in Scranton all my life. I lived on Wyoming Avenue. There are three or four, three apartment buildings in that area. They're grandfathered before zoning. My understanding is that this, now that this, uh, place has gone back, this building has gone back to a two, two-family apartment, and it is R1A rated in this, uh, this, uh, section of Scranton. Therefore, because there is a two-year lapse, I feel that, uh, we should not allow a third unit to be put on the books. I don't know whether there's more, uh, parking available there or not, I don't care. My point is, three units, after it has been set back, according to your record, it has been set back to a two-family apartment building. Let us not continue to defy the R1 rating of Green Ridge and put more apartments where they don't belong. We're allowed up to two, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to give testimony?
Sure. I'm sorry, I'm sorry about this. Um, and I, and I'm only asking because of the position that I held with the city in the past, but according to the condemnation report, and I'm not, and I'm not arguing the release of condemnation in the certificate of occupancy, I'm just curious that with a third unit, based on the condemnation report, has a structural engineer's report been done on the building?
Not that I'm aware of.
To make sure that it's struck, to make sure that it's structurally, you know, capable of handling a third unit. Cause it could be vacant now, but the more appliances, things like that, that you add into a unit, that adds weight to a building as well. So, I'm just curious on that, because it does say in the report that there were structural deficiencies. I don't see where the structural deficiencies are, so I don't know if that was foundation, I don't know if that was the roof, I, I have no idea. But, I'm just curious as to whether or not there's a structural engineer's, engineer's report on it.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Going back to Mr. Walsh's parking plan that he gave us, I, I am totally confused. You have, you have the driveway, which I see, and you have a property, it says property structure. What do you mean by property structure? The stairs?
That's the house. That's the house.
This is the house? And so you have a spot behind the house?
Correct.
And then another spot behind that? And then it's...
It's not connected. There's a space, and then there's two more spots.
And is there, and there's an alley?
No, there's no alley. This is a four-car garage.
So, they're just gonna be able to get to access the driveway?
The driveway is... Please help me, please.
Uh, no, I don't really think so. Cause it doesn't say house, it doesn't have measurements. I'm gonna be honest with you, Mr. Walsh, I didn't, I didn't go to your property, because as I said at the beginning of the meeting, I didn't have a parking plan. So, if I went to your property, which I, I saw, went to the front, I saw the front of the house.
Yes.
There would've been no point to go to the back, because I would've just been sitting there.
Well, that wasn't made clear, that was not made clear to me. Again, I was working with Mr. Sweeney as well, and, um, I'm sorry for that, but I didn't know, I thought if I brought it with me, it would be fine. I thought you went out and looked at the property, so...
We, we, yeah, we, we, we do usually, but if we don't have a parking spot, there's a parking plan, there's nothing for us to, we can't just stand there and just, you know, just...
I, I understand your...
And be confused.
I understand your position. But I have the five spots, so...
But there's no measurements, and there's nothing here, so I, I just don't feel comfortable with the parking plan.
So, was this house built as a three-unit?
Yes.
So, there's three, there's three meters, three gas meters, three kitchens?
Three everything. Three floors, first floor, second floor, third floor.
Do you have any idea what year the third apartment was put in there, since it was originally...
He said it was built as a three-unit.
Built with three, then why...
Excuse me?
It was condemned.
Do I have any...
Yeah, so it's, when something's condemned, it goes back to its original, original status, which I thought Mark Seitzinger said...
No, it goes back to what it's zoned for.
And it was, and it was zoned for three? I thought we said it was zoned for two.
It's not zoned, it's R1A.
Right, so it was zoned for two, that's, that's, that's why I'm confused.
No, it's zoned for one.
Did you have, like, rental registration on the three units and stuff like that?
Excuse me, sir?
Did you have any rental registration on the three units prior to the condemnation or anything?
No, sir.
Make a motion?
A second.
So, what's the motion?
To approve the third unit.
Approve the, the option.
Motion to approve?
Um, um, no, for that same reason. Oh, sorry, my microphone was off. No, for that same reason.
Mr. Morris?
No, for that same reason too. No, for that same reason too.
Mr. Gattens?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
I vote yes. Vote of three to one, you've been denied.
Call the next case, please.
Number four, Raymond Bartoli seeks variance to construct a parking lot on a vacant lot at the corner of Taylor Avenue and Vine Street, R1A zone.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you sound me swear to testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you got?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Raymond Bartoli, 1500 Abington Road, um, or the Abington Township. Uh, so, first of all, I'll apologize for lack of detail in the application. Um, if I can approach, I do have some more documents, uh, that may help.
Sure.
So, what you have in front of you is a little bit clearer picture than may have been in the application. Um, and on the second page, um, there is a more detailed parking plan as well for what is planned for the property. Um, the, uh, the white building, uh, here, uh, to the left in the picture is newly purchased by myself. Um, the vacant lot there is what we're talking about today for a parking variance. Uh, what I'm looking to do is add a, um, 36-foot by 45, uh, parking, uh, for the tenants, which is graduate student housing for University of Scranton. Um, the parking spaces will be nine-foot wide by 18 long. There's also another 18-foot space behind them, so that they can easily pull out. Um, part of the plan will have egress onto Taylor Ave. Uh, there'll be an additional, uh, 20-foot, so that they're gonna be parking in front of that egress, and parking behind it on Taylor Ave. Um, there is a four-foot, uh, buffer zone between the nearest property, which I do not own, um, and there will be a four-foot buffer on each side, uh, for the walkways on the sides of the roads. Um, there is shrubbery on each side between the houses of the parking lots as well. Um, and there will be a small grade in the front of the property, uh, that will be filled in with grass and shrubbery as well.
Um, while I was looking at this, I don't know if you specified which house you were going to be supplying, the white one? Okay.
The white one, yes, ma'am. So, the plan is, um, like I said, it's for five, uh, parking spaces, as you can see on the drawing. Um, and, um, any questions on that?
I see it's very slopy. Well, what's your game plan as far as making it into a parking lot?
So, the slope, um, is kind of, if you're looking at the picture, the slope is right towards the center of the picture and down towards the street, so it's kind of sloping down from Taylor Avenue. Um, now, that, that front corner of the property, that's towards the front of the picture, um, that there, as we kind of grade in, so we're gonna grade down along the back, and then fill that in towards the front, will, will provide a much more level surface. Um, and then, that'll be designed, uh, so that we have a 30-degree, uh, angle of repose in the front. Um, that way, there'll be no erosion, uh, on that grade that will still be in the front of the property. So, essentially, if you look at the picture, uh, towards the back, shrubbery along each house, uh, there'll be a slight indent of, of approximately six to 10 inches, and then towards the front, um, that hill will be much lower in the front towards the sidewalk.
Dan, I don't believe there's a curb cut for this. What, what would he have to do to get a curb cut to use this as a parking lot?
That would be part of the building permit process.
Uh, the current plan, just to add a little bit more granularity to it, the current plan is for asphalt, uh, ID3 with, with two-way modified stone underneath it. So, it'll be a very, um, good structure, and it'll be, um, you know, much more appealing for that corner, I believe, than, than the current condition.
What's the distance of your driveway from that stop sign?
Uh, the stop sign on the corner of Taylor and Vine, you mean?
Yes.
Uh, that'll be 20-foot from the egress, so it's gonna be 20-foot from that corner of the property, uh, up to the entrance of the parking lot, is, is the current plan.
And, uh, Don, that, with that driveway, is that appropriate, or should it be wider? I, I thought it was supposed to be wider than that.
I'm kind of leafing through the book. I, I would think, I think 12 feet where each road is the minimum.
Yeah, I think it's 12 or 13. So, your driveway has to be wider.
Does he have to be so far away from that, that stop sign?
He's actually, he's actually 70 feet away from the corner of Taylor and Vine.
70?
70. Uh, 57. I'm sorry, 57, I'm reading it wrong.
No, he can't be.
No, I think that's the whole...
Your overall length is 57 feet.
Yes, the overall, uh, property lot is 57.
Yeah.
So, it's 20 feet, okay.
What's the requirement, then, is it 30?
It's 25, I believe.
25?
Would be a no parking area, setback from the stop sign.
So, you're gonna have to move up higher.
That's fine, yes. We, we have the space there, I just picked 20, cause I thought you can easily fit a car in that space, but we can make a 25 as well.
What's your plans, uh, are you paving the, the parking lot?
Yes.
Um, uh, my concern is, uh, there's on-street parking on that street.
Yes.
Um, and, and this, it's hard to see on this picture. I see cars parked in pretty much all of the spaces. You're going to be taking away somebody's street parking. Do you have any idea? And, did you speak to the neighbors and ask any of them if those are any of their cars? And if they have a problem with it?
Yeah, the only street parking that'll be removed, um, in my opinion, is anything that we have in that driveway, whether, whether it's the nine or we moved it up as well.
It's basically the length of one car, so it's only one spot, but...
Essentially.
One spot in that, it, I, I would work up there, so I, it's...
Yes. And the, the current, um, the current tenants in, in the building there, the white building, um, you know, they park on the street, so their, their parking would be removed from the street as well. So, you know, in my opinion, we would be removing the current tenants, we, they would have a parking space, and then there'd be more, uh, road space for, um, any other homes in the area.
Losing one to gain five.
Is that...
Losing one to gain five.
Yeah, well, that's what I, that's why I was asking if you, if those cars were, that were parked there were...
Yes.
The tenants of the house that you want, okay.
Yes, they are.
Good. And, um, just lost my train of thought. When I get it back.
Sorry, I didn't provide this drawing earlier. Apologies.
Well, it was easy enough to see. Oh, oh, sorry, so, you're, you want this parking lot strictly for that house on the corner, the white house?
The, the white one, yes.
So, what if somebody drives up, sees, "Oh, look, there's a parking lot," and I'll park there, even though they live, or they're visiting someone that may or may not live? How are you going to, are you gonna put up signage?
Yes, I fully plan on putting signs, you know, tow-away, tenant parking only, I'll give them parking passes, so that it's, you know, it's known that that is, uh, for the people in that property.
A gate works really well.
What's that?
To keep people out. I said a gate works really well, to keep people out.
Oh, yes, yeah, I was, I was planning on signage, was my thought.
I'm looking at the, the line of sight coming out of that driveway, if we're gonna cause a problem with that. Just give me a minute here.
Sure.
Well, Don, you probably know that answer, I'm sure, off the top of your head. Are we looking at a, a line of sight coming out of that driveway?
Yes, if there's a car parked there, you mean?
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to look at it, yeah. We might have to lose two spots there to keep a little...
That's when I finish.
Hey, Don, is there a problem with that driveway coming in there with the, the sight line, or line of sight?
Uh, I was just telling Mr. Penntar, I would have the engineer look at that. You may have to lose two parking spots to keep, uh, a sight distance, so you don't have a car, like, coming out between the bumpers of two other cars. You know, it's kind of like your, your mother taught you, don't walk out in between two cars, you don't want to have somebody driving out between two cars parked close together.
You'd have to petition counsel to remove them spots, I might correct you.
Which may be a little assignment.
If you have to eliminate two spots or a spot on each side of that driveway.
If, if it needs a no parking, if it needs a no parking sign before, after, there would be an ordinance by counsel.
If I can just add as well, uh, you know, part of the parking lot design, we do have that extra 18 feet, uh, behind the, the, the length of the required parking spaces, so they, they could technically pull out, and they can exit, uh, frontwards, they don't have to back out of the...
No, that, that has nothing to do with backing out, it's pulling out as well. If you have cars parked right on the edge of the driveway...
It's really hard to see around a car, yeah. It's how we...
You, you have to know it's out to get out, so, I mean, just looking at part of the ordinance with it, so, thanks.
I would, I would just, and how do we, uh, guarantee that this is gonna be tied to that other, this, this is a separate parcel?
Yep.
Is it, or is it the same?
The parcels were purchased together. It's, they were not, so they're...
Are they on the same PIN number?
Um, they do have two separate lot numbers, as far as taxes are concerned.
So, so in effect, they could be sold separately?
Yeah. It could be, that is not my intention.
Well, the next owner could be, though, that's probably gonna look down the road as well.
I mean, it, it could be accomplished through a, through a deed restriction, or, or something, or by joining the two properties together.
I'd be more comfortable if we joined the properties together in the same PIN number, uh, so that this variance that you're, you're looking for would, would go with that whole property, instead of, I mean, if you decide five years from now to move on and, and sell that house, you could actually sell that lot to someone else, and, and, you know, they could use it for what they want at that point there. Anyone else, Sean?
I mean, you, you wanna make that a stipulation, you wanna make that...
We'll see if there's anyone here first.
Is there anybody here from the audience who wants to give testimony on this case? There is not?
Okay, Dan, we, we can't do a deed restriction from here, can we?
We could put a restriction, uh, we can, we can do a deed restriction, but, but we could put a restriction, or a condition, I should say, as to the approval that, uh, it cannot be sold separately. Or the, or the variance would be revoked.
The only problem with that is, is, is down the road, who's gonna follow that, who's gonna find it? I'd rather, I'd rather see it come back, have it put as one unit under the same PIN as, as the house, make it one PIN for the county, and then we're assured that it goes with that, that property.
If you wanna put that condition on it, you can't put that, the condition on it.
What we just said, yeah.
So, the, the condition would be if the property's ever sold, the variance...
No, 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 that's a different condition, that's the first one. This is the second one that I'm gonna go with.
He wants the two lots, the two ones.
If, if it's approved, it'll be proved conditionally that you follow through and have that joined as one PIN number.
It would be what we would call a lot combination plan for a reverse subdivision, where you're joining the two lots together and filing a new deed with the whole parcel, both the house and the parking on one deed.
And if you ever intend to sell that, it, it's, you know, a multifamily, or if you have the parking there, to me, it's just gonna increase your value in that area to do that, but that's up to you. So, I, I'm gonna make the condition onto this, is that, as I said, that the two properties combined under, to the Lackawanna County Courthouse, as to one PIN number for both properties, same PIN number.
Just so you're, we're clear, Raymond, what's the address of, what's the address of the white house?
Uh, 1221 Vine Street.
I mean, we don't have to vote like that, you, I mean, we, we can vote.
With the first restriction, that you have to sell the properties together, not separately...
Well, we can vote just on his application, as is.
We can vote on your application, or with, with what he's asking for.
Like the original application.
I mean, I, I would rather the original application, personally, that way if something happened, it could be, um, you know, if, for example, I wanna take down the parking lot and sell it as a lot in the future, and maybe put up an apartment, but at this time, you know, I don't see that space as something to put up in another apartment, I would see that more as parking attached to this, um, current apartment.
He wants to make sure it's gonna stay with the property, that, that's what he's saying.
Sure.
It's up to you what you want us to do.
I'm okay, I'm okay with that condition.
The condition to join it as one property for the PIN, I, I think it's the smartest move we could do.
So, you made a motion with the condition?
So, we'll have to make a motion to add, to add this.
A motion with the condition.
I'm sorry?
Somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll make a motion with the condition that the property, uh, the house property and the parking lot, or the vacant lot, will be combined under one PIN.
I'll, I'll second that.
To one deed.
Well, it can, it can be combined under one deed, we can't control the assessor's office putting it under one PIN.
Right, but what I'm saying is, it's put it under one, one deed.
One deed.
I second, I second.
Ms. Newcombe?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, a vote of four to, four to zero. You've been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with this.
Call the next case, please.
Case number five, Birdhouse Outdoor LLC Appeals Decision of the Zoning Officer Denying Permit for an Off-Premise Sign, seeks an interpretation on whether the parcel is a legal non-conforming use for the requested off-premise sign, and in the alternative seeks a special exception for a change of one non-conforming use into another and/or a variance for an off-premise sign at 141 Jefferson Avenue, CD Zone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Matt Barrett. I'm here tonight on behalf of Birdhouse Outdoor. I have Ryan Adcroft, Principal of, uh, Birdhouse Outdoor. Would you like to have him sworn in so I can-
Sure. You raise your right hand, please. Do you sound me swear to testimony you're about to give? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Ryan Adcroft, A-D-C-R-O-F-T, 801 Electric Street, Scranton. Mr. Adcroft, are you associated with Birdhouse Outdoor? Yes. And what is that company? We're an outdoor advertising company. And do you have a lease or a proposed site at what's sometimes referred to as Rocky's Building at the corner of Jefferson and Spruce? Correct. And is this a picture of the proposed use? Yes. And is this a picture of the proposed use coming from the opposite direction? Yes. So we'll mark the first, uh, first photograph is coming on Jefferson Avenue, heading south, and the other one would be heading north on Jefferson Avenue coming from Lackawanna Avenue, so that'll be number two, okay?
Which also would've been nice to have prior to the meeting, so we could've seen what we were looking at.
Uh, they were submitted twice.
Well, we, we never received anything.
Yeah. Uh, they were with all of the initial paperwork. I'm not sure what the office, I know the office had lost the first, uh, submission, so I had to resubmit. It was included in my, uh-
Just for clarification, this is going on the side of the building?
Yes.
On each side of the building?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, um- Let me show you. Is this a, can you describe, how about I'll walk up and you can describe it as I'm showing it to them? Can you describe this photograph? Yeah. Uh, so this is a picture from the University of Scranton's archives, dated back to nineteen sixty-six, of two, uh, two signs, um, one of which you could actually see, Seagram's advertising on it, which is an off-premise sign, uh, on the building of, of Jefferson. So the board is clear, when you say there's two signs, is the one sign showing, uh, facing towards the University of Scranton's campus, uh, facing Jefferson Avenue? Correct. And is there a second sign lower down the building along the Spruce side? Correct. That would be facing north? Correct. Let me show you. Is this a, can you describe what this photograph is and just give me a second to go up and give it to the folks that are up there? The, this next submission is, uh, is a current, uh, structure. Matt, is this, is this what you're submitting? This is a current structure on the building, um, that housed the previous billboard. If you could just describe the signs that you proposed to put up. These are wall signs? Yeah, the proposed signs, um, won't protrude from the roof, however, they will be, uh, flush with the wall as a wallscape installation, um, right on that, that accompany, that wall.
What's the size of them?
Three hundred square foot. Three hundred square foot signs.
So what's the length and width?
What's that?
Length and width.
Uh, twelve, uh, twelve feet high by twenty-five feet wide. Thanks. With that, we would submit that the photographs establish that there was in fact an existing signage on that building. Uh, there's evidence that the structure still remains to house signs on top of that building. Uh, the use itself is evident from the photographs, and, uh, for that reason, we maintain that it would be a non-conforming use, uh, in which case, uh, the signs could be erected.
How long ago would you say them original signs were removed from that building?
Uh, the, the current owner purchased the building, I believe, in, uh, eighty, nineteen eighty-three, and, uh, they weren't currently on the building. The, these, the structure was, though.
So this is on there, them signs are on there long before they redid the zoning ordinances in the city. Am I correct? I'd say in the sixties, I think it was. You'd say the signs are off, probably.
By what time?
In the mid-sixties. Would you say the signs were up in the mid-sixties, late sixties, or?
Uh, it would be a guess. It would maybe, he's, the, the previous owner mentioned they could've been up, you know, a few years before he occupied the building. I, I don't have that answer, though. And I would point out that the photograph shows aerial view of campus nineteen sixty-six.
That's what I was looking out to see.
I think, too, if you look at it, I, I think that, my recollection is, uh, that there was a, a billboard at the base off the alley, this side of the alley, uh, at the end of the gas station property. I think that was a freestanding off-premises sign. I think that one is also depicted in the photograph. I think that might be in the presence of, uh, of another- Lamar's. Lamar's digital currently.
These are digital, right?
No.
Somebody asked that?
This is just a-
I was, I was looking at the pictures. I don't know if somebody asked that.
Yeah, so this is a vinyl, uh-
Both?
Yeah, vinyl static sign.
I'm looking at our ordinance, seven twelve A, for the off-premise signs and, and, um, I, I always have trouble with these billboards. I mean, I, I have nothing against billboards. I've used them. Uh, but sometimes when you start encroaching downtown, um, it, it becomes a problem with me. And it, it's to prevent visual pollution in the city. Uh, I'm just taking some excerpts out of seven twelve A, creating additional visual distraction to motorists, especially along the high-speed expressways, along busy arterial streets, and we, we all know that intersection is terribly busy, uh, at, at all times of the day. The only time it stops is probably over the nighttime hours, late nighttime hours. And I, I probably have an easier time with the billboard that's up in the air than one that's at sight level, where, uh, traffic is moving. So I, I'm just having a hard time coming into this where it, it doesn't go against that ordinance in an awful lot of areas, and I, I just feel like it does. I, I, that's all I have. That's just my opinion looking at this, so.
So I think the first issue before the board is whether or not there is an established non-conforming use, uh, that would have predated the ordinance that you're reading.
Okay. The, the ordinance, the new ordinance is nineteen ninety-three. At the time of the new ordinance, your testimony is that there was no signs there. So my opinion is this would need a variance because it's, there was no signs at night when this ordinance was passed. The ordinance tells you where you could put the, the on-premise or off-premise signs.
Respect, respect.
While, while your hardware might be there, the signs were not there.
But the hardware is evidence of a non-abandoned use, and therefore, if the use is established, then the use is established. As you know, Mr. Pennetar, I think it was in the TKO case that they talked about a constitutional right attaches to the use and that the use continues to run with the property. I think this board also has dealt with the issue with regards to antenna signs at 550 Plaza when Sprint came before you and was seeking approval, and I think the argument in that case, and I think ultimately approved by Judge Corbett, was that the existence of the hardware establishes non-abandonment of a use. So respectfully, the use itself is established prior to the ordinance. The, uh, the hardware itself establishes the ongoing use and non-abandonment, and therefore, I would submit that the non-conforming use has been established and maintains.
The, the signs that were there, were they off-premise or on-premise signs? Because I'm looking at its advertising, Seagram's, which would indicate that, that we know there was a bar there, so it would have to be considered an on-premise sign because they're advertising a liquor that's served in that bar.
Respectfully, you'd be incorrect in that situation. Seagram's is a separate company. You can't, it would not be advertising in premises. Seagram's never occupied the space. That would be off-premises.
We have a sign on the side of the, uh, movie theater that advertises Miller, if I'm not mistaken, Miller Beer, which they served in that time, and, and I was understanding from the pass zoning officer, because it advertised a product that was inside that building, it became an on-premise sign.
So you're saying if we advertise alcohol at Rocky's Lounge, that would be on-premises?
Well, I'm saying that the sign that was there previously, the Seagram's, I'm saying was, it was, I'd see if that's considered an on-premise or off-premise.
If I could get clarity on that, if, if any alcohol is served at Rocky's and we advertise alcohol on that property, it's considered on-premises.
We would, so you're looking for an off-premise sign, though. Am I correct? You're looking for an off-premise sign?
Uh, we are, but if you told me I could only put alcohol on the sign, I don't think I'd have a problem getting alcohol on the sign.
I, I, I'm not saying what to do with that one. I'm just saying, I'm trying to get the clarification of what was there before, like the original signs.
Our position would be that that would be an off-premises advertisement. If, if the board concludes otherwise. Yes.
The city's position would be that there were no signs. If signs were removed, the non-conforming use was abandoned, according to their testimony, at least in nineteen eighty-three. I, even looking at these signs versus where these two pieces of metal are, I, I'm not convinced that they are the actual, they may have been part of the sign, but they're not the sign.
And I, I agree.
I think that was the issue presented to Judge Corbett in the antenna case. The antennas themselves were not there, but the hardware, the brackets, and the other material remained.
That was different because there was interior wiring that all went all the way down the building.
I couldn't hear you.
There was different because there was also wiring that went all the way through the building, not just, not just on the top. They removed some of the stuff, but some of the stuff was still there.
My recollection, all the interior had been removed from the chase, but it was only the brackets on the exterior of the building.
I, I don't recall it just being the brackets, but I could be wrong. I wouldn't be the first time.
I could be wrong, but that's my recollection.
So do you want us to vote on whether this is a non, uh, non-abandoned use first?
Whether it's a non-conforming use.
Whether it's a non-conforming, non-abandoned use.
I would say non-conforming.
Okay. We wanna vote on that first?
Sure.
Sure. Sorry.
Microphone. You could just, yeah.
Keep, keep it between you guys, yeah. Yes.
If I could ask for clarity as to how Joyce is standing in this matter.
All right. That's up to the board now again. Standing says, standing generally means a party being sufficiently affected or threatened by effects of, by a controversy to obtain judicial resolution of that controversy. And the board has the authority, if it chooses to exercise it, to determine who has standing in each case.
I think, Dan, in other cases, we have allowed, we, we have allowed them to testify. Is that correct?
Uh, we've kinda gone case by case.
We could, maybe just for the record, if we could establish the closest, uh, Joyce advertisement.
I'd, I'd have to, we'd have to have Kevin sworn in, uh, to answer that question. I cannot answer that question. I would also-
I have no problem with Mr. Joyce being sworn in.
I would also, uh, part of the reason that I wanted to testify before the ruling on the non-conforming use was because one of the cases Attorney Barrett mentioned was the TKO case. Uh, that case was mine. Not only was I the attorney on that case, but I owned the building.
And that, I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir. If he's gonna testify, I'm gonna be sworn in so he can be crossed.
He's an attorney. He can, he can, he's representing the court.
Um, yeah, I'm here to testify, or options, I'm sorry, to represent my client, but I have knowledge of the cases that I think may be, uh, helpful to the board.
Let's get a ruling from the board first. As far as the testimony, if he's allowed to testify. I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so there was two TKO cases, and I'm not gonna waste too much time getting into that, but there was, there was two of them. The first case, I came in front of the board and asked for five units in an apartment building that, uh, the city had told me had been abandoned and my non-conforming use had been lost. I asked for five units, and the board ruled against me, and we went all the way to the Commonwealth Court who ruled against me and told me that, uh, in their decision, that I had only proved the existence of three lawful non-conforming use departments in this particular instance. I'd only proved three lawful ones.
I think I'm the only one that was on the board when you came before me. That was Columbia, yes.
Yeah, Columbia Street. We came back and we, we asked for three after that, and this is the second case that Attorney Barrett's referring to, because this is the one that I won. I had lost at the zoning board level here, I had lost at the local level, but it was overturned by the Commonwealth Court, and I believe that is the case he is referring to here. The reason I had lost the first case is because section eight oh six E two of the ordinance says that the applicant shall be responsible to provide evidence that the non-conformity was not abandoned, uh, and, uh, taken in conjunction with section seven oh one B of the ordinance, this pertains to the sign section. It says that a permit under this ordinance shall be required for all signs, okay? So even if this, if this sign was taken down, so the, the, it's on, the burden is on the applicant right now to show that, and what I'm getting at is that this, that the sign permit was paid for every year since this sign was taken down, in which case there'd be an argument for this to be a pre-existing non-conforming use. But what the court ruled against me when I asked for five units, and I'm quoting from the Commonwealth Court here, uh, "The right to maintain a non-conforming use is only available for uses that were lawful when they came into existence and which existed when the ordinance took effect." Meaning, i- if this, if the proposed location of this sign tonight was not legal in nineteen ninety-three when this ordinance took effect, then there is no lawful pre-existing non-conforming use to carry over. And seven oh one B says that a permit is required. So if there is no permit produced up to nineteen ninety-three, from nineteen eighty-three when it was taken, nineteen eighty-three, when it was taken down to nineteen ninety-three, then it is not a lawful sign. So there is no lawful pre-existing non-conforming use to be carried over.
That's just not right.
That's my position on that. That's all I have to say at this point.
I, I would just point out that he's right. The Commonwealth Court said, "The right to continue a non-conforming use arises constitutional protections." So when one has established through photographic evidence the use of a sign, that attaches constitutional protection to that property, and that use continues to run with the property. And we have provided you evidence that, in fact, there remains structures to accept a sign on that property. That would be evidence of non-abandonment. So at the idea that you would have to go get a permit for a sign that you already had would be like saying somebody who had a, had a non-conforming use in a neighborhood that now went to an R one A, that you have to now go down to City Hall and ask for a permit for that third unit? Just doesn't make sense.
My understanding is that the city charges a sign fee every year, that unlike, similar to the rental registration ordinance, if you want to continue to keep your sign up, you need to pay the city a sign fee every year. In fact, the rental registration ordinance was at issue in the TKO case, uh, because it was not paid. Uh, there were some other circumstances. Again, I don't wanna get too far off, uh, the beaten path and get into the, the specifics of the TKO case here. But there is a city ordinance that requires you to pay a sign, uh, permit fee every year, and I believe it would be the burden of the applicant to show that that, uh, sign fee has been, in fact, been paid in order to make this a lawful sign. And I would also point the board to section seven oh five of the ordinance, which deals with abandoned or outdated signs, uh, states that conforming and non-conforming signs advertising a use no longer in existence shall be removed within one hundred eighty days of the cessation of the use. This sign has been down, uh, for, I, I guess that would be thirty-five years approximately. Uh, to state that because there is, I did not see the rendering or the picture of, of the posts that are allegedly still on the roof, but, uh, the sign itself is gone and, and we believe that the use has been abandoned.
The second section that he just read talks about advertisement of a use, not the use itself. So if, for example, I was advertising for horses and buggies that were no longer available, I'm to take that sign down, not take down all signs. It's the use is no longer, uh, it's the, in that situation, you're advertising the use, not the, not the use of the sign. It's a misread.
Mr. McDonough, do you have any? Who are you here on behalf of?
Thank you, Attorney Pennetar, and at the risk of beating a dead horse, I think that both you and, and Mr. King really, Attorney Olivetti's talked about various provisions of the current ordinance. The threshold inquiry here that Attorney Barrett has totally missed, with great respect to him, is that a non-conforming use and the application of a non-conforming use provision in a statute applies when the use is in existence at the time of the adoption of a law. In this instance, uh, Mr. Adcroft has testified that at the very least, this sign had been abandoned ten full years prior to the adoption of the ninety-three ordinance. So there was no non-conforming use in existence at the time of the adoption. Section, uh, uh, the non-conforming use provisions of the law are clearly remedial, but designed to prevent hardship for people who were, uh, running an existing business or utilizing a current use at the time of the adoption of the law. I could say, that, just to make an example, I was told where I lived that across the street there was a chicken farm in the early nineteen hundreds. Now, if I were to- Now, if I were to buy the backyards of two or three of my neighbors and go over and dig up a couple of, you know, worn-out pickets, I could come in here and say, under Attorney Barrett's interpretation, that I want to continue that non-conforming use of a chicken farm and dump 100 chickens in, in the, in the property that I just leased. It's, it's just a, I celebrate his creativity, but it's clearly, this does not come under a non-conforming use.
And with respect to Mr. McDonough, that analogy doesn't hold up. If you had chicken farms and they were taken over by residential properties and the chicken farm's not there, Rocky's Lounge in the building is still there. The structure's still there. It's not the same thing.
Okay, I'm going to make a ruling that I agree with Mr. McDonough, that the non-conforming use has to be in existence at the time of the passage of the 1993 ordinance, and therefore I'm going to deny the special exception request, and we'll go right to the variance request.
I'm sorry, you're denying?
Yes.
The board's not?
All right. The board, you want to vote on it?
Sure.
Sorry, was that?
Ladies?
Let's just get clarification, Dan, before we vote. We're voting on-
Whether the, this was a non-conforming use in 1993.
Okay, thank you.
In 1993.
So a yes is that it was a, a non-conforming use in, in 1993, and a no is it was not a non-conforming use in 1993.
No, Dylan, you're not in favor of anybody. You're deciding whether it's a non-conforming use in 1993. Was the sign, was the sign a non, was this structure a non-conforming use in 1993?
I would, I would ask that the vote be whether or not it's been established that there was a non-conforming use established before 1993.
Has to be a non-conforming use, it has to be at the time of the, the passage of the ordinance.
That's, that's like, Mr. Penataro, that's like saying, if this third unit wasn't occupied at the time of the, of the passage of the ordinance-
It was-
-then it's somehow not there. The, the question is whether or not the non-conforming use was established and prior to the 1993 ordinance.
The sign is not there. The structure's there.
I agree.
Okay.
Structure's there.
So that's what we're voting on.
So yes or no?
Whether the structure is enough to make it a non-conforming use.
Well, just for the record, and not to gum up the words here-
You never told us who you were representing, by the way.
I, I thought I had, and I apologize. Lamar Advertising, who is the equitable owner of the property located at 201 Jefferson Avenue, which is owned by Boca Realty. Lamar has a lease we can enter into the record if, if the board wants us to do that.
I was just curious.
Thank you, and I apologize.
You can continue your statement, I predict if we stop.
I, to, I, I think it's a stretch to call whatever was on top of the building. I haven't seen a photograph yet as constituting an existing structure as we sit here today.
Mr. Adcroft, do you have another copy of that photo?
Yeah.
What do you want?
Which, which one?
The one from the roof.
Looking down the roof. With the structure, you're saying from the signs?
So just on this record, so we're clear, it appears that there are two steel-
I think the photograph speaks for itself.
... several feet apart with, with nothing else on the-
Photo's been made part of the record, and I don't think it needs any further description.
I, I'm not trying to be hyper-technical here, but, but honestly, there's, it's the applicant's burden. There's no testimony on this record that a sign ever existed on top of these two, these two grids, whatever they are. So I, I just want on this record, and if, if a trial court or an appellate court were to have to make a determination based on this record, that these two steel extensions do not constitute a structure.
Well-
That's just, that's just my position.
Listen-
The, the photo, we can enter into the record, I suppose.
The photo is entered into the evidence, into record, and an appellate court can make its determination as to whether or not it's a structure or not. But Mr. McDonough's arguing, his argument, I provided you a photograph showing a, of a steel structure that exists on a roof currently, and another photograph that shows a sign going down Spruce Street over the same area of the building. I think that court and you can clearly interpret that that is the exact location of that sign.
I, I would point out that there is a definition of sign in the definition section of the ordinance. And I submit that this structure clearly does not meet the definition of a sign that's located on page, Section 2, Page 2-25.
I think that, I think counsel's getting hung, hung up on the difference between signage and use. I'd be happy to have Mr. Adcroft come up and point out the second sign on Spruce Street if necessary.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'd be happy to have him point out the second sign on Spruce Street if there's a question.
Yeah, we, we have the photos. It shows it. I still think we have to vote on whether it's a non-conforming use.
Yeah, can you repeat that, please?
We need to decide whether this, the structure is a non-conforming use.
Prior to-
In 1993.
Prior to 1993. Rather than-
So a yes is that it was a non-conforming use and a no that it's not-
Say it's a non-conforming use or not a non-conforming use. Make it easy.
And again, Mr. Penataro, I just need to object to that. The form, where you're forming that question, whether the structure is, the question is whether a non-conforming use has been established.
Okay. Whether a non-conforming use has been established.
I think we're all confused on, on-
Dan, I got to ask-
-conforming use for this-
Let's take a vote.
Thank you.
Yeah. We ready?
Need a-
No. We're not ready, no.
Okay.
We, we're looking for more clarification on this wording.
Whether they have, the applicant has established that, that there was a non-conforming use in existence in 1993. Okay?
Okay. Okay, everyone okay with that wording? No, then you don't agree it was, correct?
Right.
Say it was a non-conforming use or not a non-conforming use.
Okay.
Okay.
Now we need a-
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Newcomb?
Um, no, it was not nor, not, not a non-conforming use.
Mr. Morris?
I vote no, it was not the same.
Mr. Gattens?
Uh, not, was not a non-conforming use in 1993.
Mr. Chairman?
That same vote, not. So we're going to move towards the-
Go proceed on the variance.
And obviously, we would have asked for a special exception based upon the existence of a non-conforming use. Now, they voted, so we don't, we're not going from one non-conforming to another, to another non-conforming use, because they've determined that there was no non-conforming.
Correct.
Okay. With regards to the variance, I know this board has struggled month after month with outdoor signs. I saw in July, where you approved one up on North Main Avenue, across from a digital sign of Lamar, I think it was on Bartelay Outdoor Signs. Certainly in this situation, we're seeking for a variance downtown in the CD. Obviously Lamar's got one right across the street, so it can't be that offensive to the community, given the fact that it exists. Additionally, we provided you photographic evidence that there in fact were signs on that building in the past. With regards to Mr. Gattens' concerns regarding outdoor signs and amount of traffic, I know the board struggled with the signage down, I think it was Shamrock Sign, down outside of a very heavily-traveled Scranton School District property, right at the high school. So all these concerns have been addressed month after month, but in those instances, you've approved those signs. In this situation, we're talking about a static sign that is facing in a direction other than the Lamar sign. In fact, the signs, if you look at the photograph, the proposed use that's been given to you, you can see that, you don't see the Lamar sign in any way. Lamar sign really services traffic coming in off Spruce Street, not on Jefferson Avenue in either direction. With regards to the variance, we submit that this is a minimal request, given the signage across the street, given the fact that there are numerous, numbers of sign downtown. We've heard of signs on movie theaters, we've heard of signs all throughout downtown, and in this instance, I submit that the request for variance should be approved. I would, I would think that the other outdoor companies probably agree.
We, we would actually oppose that. With all due respect to Attorney Barrett, any other sign has no bearing on the, tonight's sign and, and the requirements of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, which require a hardship to be shown in order for a variance to be granted.
You might-
I do not believe there is any hardship on this property, as there's already an existing building that's generating revenue. So I, I don't see how they can establish that this building has a hardship. So with all due respect, the other signs are irrelevant to tonight's vote.
So for clarity purposes, Joyce has taken the position that any sign on an existing building producing income cannot establish a hardship?
Joyce has taken the position that the other signs mentioned are irrelevant to tonight's proceeding, and that there is no hardship that has been shown by the applicant.
I think this board has repeatedly dealt with the hardship issue. With signage, it's a little bit strange to, to deal with. Obviously, there's a use in place. Obviously, the, the ordinance anticipates signage. In fact, we've had, in fact, the ordinance allows for wall signs, for, for non-off-premise signs. So the signs themselves make sense. And in this situation, you know, there is an existing building, but it also makes sense to allow some economic development along with the, with the sign itself, and the board has repeatedly done so.
Sean McDonough, on behalf of Lamar, once again, with great respect to the applicant, as Attorney Olivetti has indicated, the Scranton ordinance has specific provisions that require the demonstration of hardship and a number of factors for purposes of approving a sign. And, and counsel's arguments, as, as good as they are, do not constitute evidence. There's nothing on this record that, that there's any hardship associated with not allowing the sign. And, and Mr. Attorney Barrett's information with regard to comparative, what he views to be comparative situations, is of no consequence when, when you apply the ordinance as it was written. With respect to the Lamar sign that is on the property at 201 Jefferson Avenue, that was approved as an existing non-conforming use because there was a sign in place in 1993. The CD District has a categorical prohibition to these types of signs. Counsel has already agreed that this is an off-premise sign. You will not have a flat space in the city of Scranton that doesn't have a, one of these wallscapes on it if you approve this sign tonight.
And Lamar takes a position that with regards to any signage that goes up, you have to establish hardship to, to get a variance for any signage?
Fortunately, counsel, we're, we're not applying for anything tonight, so we're not here to respond to your questions.
I appreciate that. Apparently, that's the position of, of Lamar, which is somewhat surprising.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to give testimony in this case? Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Kevin Joyce, 317 Poplar Streets, Scranton.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight because the intricacies of the zoning ordinance give little to no interpretation, in particular to this topic, because it is so narrowly defined by the provisions in the code and the municipal planning code. And I think this application falls short, not only on the legal non-conforming status of a sign that doesn't exist, but any kind of use variance in a CD zone, and I'll just touch on that a little bit. As for, as far as legal non-conforming, I guess we don't have to get back into that, but just to give you background, the sign that once sat at Rocky's was a freestanding rooftop sign facing Route 11 as you come into town, and I know because it was my father's sign. And he cut it down when I was about three years old. We're talking about some, a completely different animal. Two wall signs now facing Jefferson, attached to the wall, the lower level of the building. So it's apples and oranges. Furthermore, outside of the use variance, the applicant is going for two faces, when the previous sign was a single-face poster panel, and they're going for larger signs. And even if there was a legal non-conforming sign on the walls in the lower portion of the building, it would not be applicable because the previous sign was one face, and they're asking for two.
There was previously two signs in the building.
What, what year?
We picture 1966.
Right. Well, in 1983, when it was removed, it was a single-face poster panel facing, coming into town directly across from what is now the Lamar Digital Sign. That being said, now that it's facing Jefferson, there, it's not going to be spaced out, not only by the city, they need 400 feet now, 400 linear feet on the left-hand side of the road of Jefferson from Lamar's Digital, which they do not have. And then PennDOT, which will require a PennDOT permit, because they're within 660 feet of, I'm calling it Spruce, but it's Route 11 until you cross Jefferson. But it's within 660 feet of a PennDOT-controlled road, which means they would also need spacing from Lamar's Digital under their jurisdiction. So I'm here to express that and just give some background into my knowledge on the sign and its life. And it was built when the building, I believe, was Kelly Tire in the early 1900s by Frank Smith. And my father bought it from Frank Smith Jr. in 1978, and he took it down in roughly 1983. So that's a single-face rooftop freestanding sign as opposed to two wall signs on a different part of the building, facing a different road. And that's, that's all I have to say.
May I ask Mr. Joyce a couple of questions?
Sure.
Mr. Joyce, you're a principal of Joyce Outdoor.
I am.
Your father is, again, your dad personally-
Jerry.
Jerry here. Your dad was the developer and owner of Patrick Outdoor.
Yes.
Patrick Outdoor sold its interest, I believe, in the lease it was made to Lamar.
Through a couple of different acquisitions, yeah.
They're asking that you speak into the microphone.
The interest of Patrick Outdoor was sold to Lamar?
No, it was sold to GE Capital, and they broke up the company and sold the pieces, which ultimately went to Lamar.
Okay. With regards to this, this subject property, you seem to have some information. So you, you've indicated that based upon your information, there were signs on top of that building during the time that Lamar, or that Patrick Outdoor owned it, or that Patrick Outdoor operated signage at that property.
Well, yeah, I think that's been established. There's plenty of pictures, and I know I have pictures, but the legal non-conforming use of a support structure is not a billboard face or a billboard, it's a support structure.
I appreciate your legal opinion, but with regards to the signs-
No, it's just my industry insight, knowledge, I, I know.
Oh, is it? Okay. With regards to the signs themselves, Patrick Outdoor at one point had outdoor advertising on top of that building, correct?
And it was removed.
And you said that it remained there until at least 1983?
Maybe 1983. He couldn't remember.
Somebody else, your father?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that'd like to give testimony in this case?
Now, this is our last vote on this, right?
Correct.
My, my, just point out, testimony is established, I think, even though it's not testified to by Mr. McDonough, but he had said that that sign was an outdoor sign and was pre-existing, and that's why Lamar has it there. In fact, the picture's established that there were two signs on top of that building at the same time that pre-existing outdoor sign existed, which now is in place at Lamar. I think when you take over, take over totality of all that information, you can get beyond your concerns with regards to the safety. We know that traffic has been flowing at that location for decades. With regards to the signs themselves, we've established that there were signs on top of the building. We're talking about two static signs. People coming from different directions used to be able to see both signs, I assume. Now, you can't even see, you'd only be able to see one approaching from Block 1 Avenue, the other approaching from Jefferson, it's the only sign you're going to see. People coming in off Spruce Street aren't going to see it at all. Not going to see their sign coming in off Spruce Street as they approach the intersection. So I would just point that out, ask you to take that into account.
So I would just point that out, ask you to take that into account.
I'll make a motion on the variants.
I'll second.
Motion, I'll second.
Ms. Newcomb?
No.
Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Gattens?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
No. A vote of four to zero, you've been denied.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and-
We're going to take a five-minute recess, guys.
One of the things with people's own office-